Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Start with our activity reports. I had our special council meeting on the TIF agreement. We did have a quorum and we approved that, so we have the development agreement on tonight's update. Otherwise, I don't have any other formal activities. Tarek, Megan and I were able to attend Randy Schaefer's funeral. And just what a loss to the community his passing is. I'll just note that. But otherwise, that's all I have for council business. Neil will be joining us later, but he's not here right now. So Megan?
I'm used to having that buffer. One second.
Jean? I'll come back.
Thank you.
We had a policies and procedures meeting, which we didn't get everything done we want to get done. We have to send things back to be done again. Downtown meeting, and that's interesting because we're going to be sending out a survey to, well, University of Minnesota is going to help us with a survey to send all the downtown owners and businesses. Then the same hearing, the TIF for NELSA. And we had a liquor board meeting, too.
Paul?
I just had a planning board meeting last Monday.
Megan, back over to you.
All right. I was at the TIF public hearing as well. I had a community ed meeting where we just discussed how things are going at the PAC and some upcoming classes and things like that. As Sean mentioned, I was at Randy Schaefer's funeral and we at the foundation are still trying to go ahead with the gala in view of that shocking loss, so.
It's on Saturday night with an online auction going now, right?
Yeah, well, the online auction, I believe, is.
It is on.
View, is it view only at this point, though?
No, I think you can bid.
The last email I got said that bids will begin, might have begun this Sunday, but either way. So you can check it out and at least register to bid if you can't yet at the pacfgala.org. That's what I've got.
You, one other note before I forget. We do have an update here with some additions in your old business. There's also going to be a new business, Item C, talking about a motor or handicap accessible door at the library. Didn't make the agenda, but we've got some information on it and don't think we need any approvals tonight necessarily, but at least a consensus moving forward. Onto the department head reports. Paul?
Not a whole lot to report. Officer Kater's in the final stages of his field training. He's got some additional training this week, but we will complete his field training next week, as long as all goes well. Several officers have gone to training recently. Sergeant Oakenson and I have now been formally trained on our new RMS system, so.
Wait.
It's, it's not done yet.
Okay.
It's coming. So that should go live November 12th, so we'll be training the rest of the department here probably late October. I attended the VCA's recruitment retention course as part of their supervisory course, just to see if there's any new ideas out there. I will say our sabbatical was heavily talked about at that meeting. City of Crystal has implemented that, which is great, and the instructor from the city of Roseville is going to look to try and implement that there. And then we've got Officer Kater and Officer Davis will be attending some additional field sobriety, drug impairment training this week.
Do we have a cost on that new RMS system yet?
Our cost for the upstart is nothing.
Okay.
Our, I believe our overall cost is going to be like a little over $5,000 a year, something like that.
How does that compare to what we have now?
That's fine.
Is it?
It's about the same, so.
I knew we weren't entirely sure, so.
Yeah, so what they did is they, they broke it down based on the number of officers you had within your department and where we've got a bunch of part-time guys, they were all counted as fractions and stuff like that, so I think we're actually only paying like, like five full-time, somewhere in there, just shy of five full-time, so.
All right. Any questions for the chief? All right, Ron.
There's no Ron here.
I know. We didn't have anything public works on the agenda tonight, so Ron was excused. Tarek?
All right. Yeah, the meetings that I attended were policies and procedures, liquor board, ad hoc downtown, which I have been going or reviewing some questions already with the U of M and yeah, we'll have something more final in a week or two, I think, that we can start looking at and possibly sharing. The planning meeting as well, and if you remember, the last meeting, we approved changing our financial advisor on the Pacific Life to local planning or local advisor, Jeremy Wilner. And we have since been talking to them about switching, or since they're already our advisor switching to fidelity versus Pacific Life, because I guess the fees on Pacific Life were quite high. So this should be a benefit for the employees who are participating in this plan. And yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Tarek?
Question, has early voting started?
Nope.
Okay. Not till the end of September or October?
Uh, I think it's early October.
Okay. Somebody asked me, so I was just checking.
Right. Anyone here for our open forum? Move on to the adoption of the consent agenda, includes minutes on page one, vouchers on page two totaling $171,879.59, along with the temporary street closure for the trunk or treat event. Is there a motion to approve, or does anybody want anything pulled?
Also moved.
Motion by Soini to adopt the consent agenda or approve that. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right. The old business, the transfer of funds. Steve, if you were here for the trunk or treat, that's all we're going to talk about it. You're good to go. Thank you. Tarek, you want to talk to us about this fund transfer?
Yep. Okay, we initially talked about the lot swap out by Heatherwood, which was to take a lot that's by the park so we can have another entrance exit to Ampe Park. And the even money swap was the owner of that lot or a lot that the city owned. And the city lot that was swapped with had assessments on it, $16,000 or something.
$670.94.
Yeah, $670.94. And we, the plan was to take this out of the park funds, but the last council meeting, we had discussed why can we or can we just write this off or not just pay it, not pay it? And yeah, the answer is yes. If we choose not to take out the park funds, then obviously it's the city cost that the city bears, but there's no accounting work that needs to be done, it's just a write-off.
Well, and that bond has been paid for.
Yes.
So.
If we choose we can go that route versus taking out the park.
Yeah. Well, the park funds are low, so I make the motion that we just not collect the funds.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion to leave things be and not collect the funds made by Soini, seconded by Brick. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Right. We'll skip over the variance for tractor supply, come back to that after our public hearing. Right, onto the TIF development loan agreement, page one of our update for NELSA Properties LLC. We have a development and loan agreement in our agenda. Tarek, do you want to tell us more about this?
Yeah, obviously the public hearing was last Thursday and it was approved to set up a district as well as a TIF for NELSA Properties. And the next step for us will be to approve the developer agreement, which is prepared by our city attorney. I would note that there was one change that we're making because upon reading it, there was another sentence that we'd have to remove, but it doesn't change anything. So that was the only change that we're making to it.
So just so that it's clear, the sentence is, it would amend on page number six. The dollar amount stays the same, but in paragraph number two. In number two, after that dollar amount of 3.8 million, we would strike everything else through the end that the sources of revenue are available to pay such costs, excluding the tax increment assistance contemplated herein, is $395,798. So through the 395,798 would be stricken.
So on this development agreement, and of course, NELSA Properties agrees to the development agreement they could be getting on the project.
Neil, what are we waiting around for?
Nothing much.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the development and loan agreement between the city of Paintsville and NELSA Properties LLC for TIF number 1-17.
As amended?
Yeah, with the correction, um, change.
Okay. Motion by Soini to approve the agreement with the language change we discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
Land swap.
Thank you, gentlemen. Everything's approved. You're good to go. We'll get you some signed docs and circulate, and then you're good. For you. All right. Tarek, land swap on the Fortitude senior looking.
Yes. If you guys remember when we agreed for land swap, our Fortitude, they had sent us a preliminary. They had sent us a preliminary outline of what it would look like, and it was .88 acres. And they just need to go back and do more of a survey and kind of get approval first on the water retention levels, et cetera. It was reviewed by our city engineer. They were recommending that they increase the size to .98 versus .89. So it's a matter of if we are okay with them increasing that size so they can have more of a water retention area along with that. And you can see, like from the update, the plan is included in there. If we are okay with that, then the next step would be for us to initiate the lot split. Then we can do the swap once it's split.
This came from our engineers?
Uh, no, their engineers. Our engineer had to approve it in terms of water retention.
So basically, they, they sent that design and then Chuck wanted to review the calculations to make sure that that area was actually required to retain, to do an adequate water retention pond. I mean, I think Chuck said it was maybe modestly oversized, but it was reasonable for, for what they need. He, he thought it was fair, that they, they were kind of making sure they had plenty, but, but it's not a big overreach, so.
Yeah.
Chuck, Chuck thought it was good.
And that's kind of what we said at the one meeting. If they needed a little more, we probably would.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted the council to review it and understand. And then if it is, I think the next step is going to be to ask our city engineers to go ahead and do a formal survey of, so we have a legal description that will allow us to do the lot split. The other question that, you know, that I, I just, we, we oftentimes have done our lot splits as a more formal manner where it comes to council, but in our ordinance, it can be done administratively if the city administrator believes they meet all the criteria of the ordinance. And I just, you know, for trying to move this along, I, I wanted the council to, you know, if, if it would make Tarek more comfortable, to tell Tarek it was okay to do it administratively, to approve it once we had the survey. I don't know if the council's comfortable with that, but I think it, this split meets all the criteria of our ordinance and could be approved administratively if the council's okay with it.
And one other thing to note is the lot split and the survey will be, the cost of which will be borne by the city.
But it is our property, too, so to do it internally is not a big deal. I'll make the motion to approve the modification of the agreement from .89 acres to .9, uh, from 89 to 98.
So motion by Soini to approve the expansion of the agreement, or the expansion of the land. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. I also have no qualms with Tarek just doing this administratively, and I would vote for that. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to authorize the city administrator to approve the lot split administratively under the terms of our ordinance.
Motion by Brick is stated on the action sheet to allow Tarek to move ahead. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Great. New business, A, setting a special working session, something we try and do a few times a year. We haven't been great at it this year. Anybody have dates that work better or worse? Megan, what's your working schedule like with your crazy overnights?
That's just it, nighttime. So, um, anything three-year past is fine.
And if you guys know what Neil's schedule is like, because there are certain days he doesn't like.
Well, I know he doesn't. Tuesdays, because he does the Legion, I think.
Okay.
It's on a Tuesday. I'm not sure.
Your first is out.
And there's only, yeah, one Tuesday, so.
I thought one of you guys had Wednesdays that was out, too. I'm not sure.
That was last year. At least for me.
We do have the library thing on the second, which.
But that's not until five or so, is it?
No, it's the.
It's a day trip.
It's a day trip.
Oh, okay.
Howard Lake.
So, I mean, yeah, I think it would just make for a full day, so that one's probably out.
Well, the ninth, we're doing a day trip for the liquor store, so.
Wants to just do Monday the first, or the 30th?
Just thinking what's on Monday.
I feel like I got something, but hold on.
It feels like I do, too.
Okay.
But my phone is at home. I forgot it.
The seventh, then.
I could probably do the 30th if it's later, like the 6:00 PM, just personally, yeah.
Monday the 7th?
Oh, I can't. I just remembered. No, I can. Never mind. It's the Monday. I just have to think. It's the 5th Monday, so.
Monday earlier or Monday later?
Whatever Megan wants.
Six.
On the 30th or the 7th?
7th, October 7th.
No, we were talking the 30th.
Paul? Are you good with the 30th, Paul?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to set a working session for Monday, September 30th at 6:00 PM?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, by Brick, September. Motion is to set a working session Monday, September 30th at 6:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
If you have anything for the agenda, you better let Jennifer know pretty fast.
Well, she's going to send that beast out on Thursday, so.
I told her today one, and I got another one now.
Tarek, do you want to talk about the phone service agreement?
Yes, the company that we use for our phone service is called TBSOA, and the phone system that we have is a lease system, and the company that we're using always, always, always have payment issues with Belinda, because when she's trying to get them on a payment schedule, they're very rigid, they don't want to change it. So we're always getting hit with late fees, and then we have to go back to them and plead with them to remove the late fees, which so far they've been doing, but it's just a headache that when we talked to TBSOA about this company, they said they have two other providers they work with. They recommended another provider if we switch to, which would accommodate our billing cycle, and it came out to be a dollar less per month, so. Um, you know, Belinda and I would like to see this switched, so it's just easier on the billing cycle. That's really the only change here.
I'll make the motion to approve the rental agreement between the city of Paintsville and Great America Financial Services Corporation for phone rental in the amount of $563 per month.
Motion by Soini stated on the action sheet approving the new agreement. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. New business, C, the doors of the library. We own that building, and part of it is, I'll be frank, my wife works there, so I've heard some of her stories, but I've also seen it. That door, it does not have a door opener on it. So one of the things that I've witnessed personally and that she's described are parents who come in with strollers are struggling to get the doors open, and then people who use wheelchairs, I guess there's at least one individual who comes in who uses a wheelchair, really struggles to get in and out of the door, I think struggles to get in and out of the door. So I asked Tarek and Ron to get a quote. Brad, I think, put it together, got a quote for $6,300.
I have it right here.
We reached out to the library and said, well, this came in a little bit higher. Do you think you could use it? And Pat Hanson with the Friends of the Library found a grant that we can apply for that would cover 50% of the cost.
Good.
She's working on getting that application submitted, assuming that we want to move forward with it as a council. But then there'd be the question of the other 50%. And the question was raised, if we're getting a new library, do we want to dump a few thousand into this one? My thought is that I think it's worth it to make something accessible for everyone in the community. It's not that much money. But we also talked about, Tarek is a Lions member, so he's willing to ask the Lions if they'd contribute a third of that, 50%. And then the Paintsville Lutheran Church has their endowment application process open right now, so putting in an application for an additional third. And then the city would only come up with that remainder, so it'd be a thousand and change.
Minimal.
Yeah. I mean, that's assuming that we get all of.
And by the time, and this, you know, by the time the library's built, it could be.
Yeah, we're not getting it tomorrow.
Yeah, it's not like it's not getting tomorrow. And it just makes that building more valuable to have that nicer, more access door.
And we've even talked about whether or not that building, I mean, I don't know if we've talked about it formally, but it's been spit-balled. Do we put DMV over there? Would it make sense to have the police department in that building? I don't know. I'm not obligating anyone to anything. I'm just saying things have been thrown out.
Yeah. Or sell it. We don't know.
Yeah, or sell it. We just don't know. So the question is, does it make sense to, you know, spend this money? I am inclined to say that it does.
I think it does, too.
I'm wondering why this wasn't addressed when the ADA went through.
So in talking to Katari, because I brought it up to her and I just said, Katari, it doesn't make sense to me that this door doesn't have an opener. And she said, well, we looked at it a few years ago, and she found the file. She might have emailed it to me, but it was like 2003 or something that they looked into it. And at that point, the council deemed that it was cost prohibitive, maybe applied for some grants and didn't get them. It just said that it wasn't worth going through at that time. So I, I don't know. That's all we've got.
It just seems kind of confusing that with the, the Americans with Disabilities Act came through that there was an obligation to get that put in there, but that was, then, do you know what I'd say is, might as well do it now.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, legally, I think certain aspects of certain buildings were grandfathered in after that, because I remember that coming up at the movie theater and stuff, but, which might be why it, you know, is legal, but yeah, I think it's worth it. We're not getting the new library next week or anything, so.
Well, I'm all for it.
So.
I'll go with you. I'm also a terrible, I'm a Lions member, probably the world's worst one, so I'll go with you on this, if you want.
Good.
So I think we have a consensus on that. We'll just wait until we hear back from the grants, or do we need a motion to approve moving forward with the grants?
Well, I'll talk to Pat and.
I was going to say the library's doing the grants, so.
Right.
We don't.
Pat was going to do it as a friend of the library, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, we've got a public hearing at 6:30 and six minutes to kill. We've got a proposed closed session here for real property at 683 Airport View Road, parcel 70.38648.0054. Anyone want a motion to move us into closed session to discuss that?
Sean, if you, I could fill a couple of minutes here just with a.
Yeah.
An update. You may recall that we went through all approvals and document signing and everything to sell a lot to Mr. Rodenwald out in Heatherwood Platte III. He never paid the earnest money. It was kind of a confusing situation, I, you know, and I, but I finally, I just started a formal cancellation of the purchase agreement, and then he emailed me, he wants to close on Friday. So hopefully that'll happen, but it just was one of those weird things where, I mean, we were supposed to close in June, and I honestly kind of forgot about it for a while, and then I contacted the realtor, and she was like, oh, no, no, he really, so I said, well, send the earnest money. I mean, that was part of the deal. He was supposed to pay the earnest money, and it still never has happened, but I, so she, she emailed me today and she said, we want to close on Friday. What do we need to do? And I said, you still need to pay the earnest money. So we'll see what happens, but I just wanted to update you that that, that's an oddball one. It's been dragging.
Go through information.
Long, but maybe it'll actually close.
Okay.
Do informational.
You think informational's going to take me five minutes, Jean?
Well, it's not five, it's only four.
I have something I forgot in my council report.
Give us your updated report.
Well.
Was it the guy from Frontier Homes?
Huh?
Was it the guy from Frontier Homes?
Oh, I'm trying to get my report here. Jeez.
No, it was somebody else. Somebody else, okay.
I, it's not official, obviously, but I went to the movies this past weekend, theater in town, and that was a great time, and I encourage everyone to go and support the theater reopening, so.
Only weekends is open?
So far, I believe so, yeah. I just saw the next lineup coming for this coming weekend, pretty solid, so.
I haven't seen it yet.
Um, they are showing Fast and Furious, Jurassic Park, and one of the Minions movies, I think the first, like Despicable Me one. So I know people had been asking them for kids' movies, so that's going to be exciting. Yeah, Thursday through Sunday, they'll be open this week. So if anybody, or I know that they're serving some different concessions, too, that they sell, you know, you don't have to go to the movies, so I just encourage everyone to stop in and support that business.
So I took the kids, and now my daughter made me re-watch Back to the Future today, so.
Yes, it's a good one. That's what Andy and I went to, since it was the one showing in the afternoon and I had to work, so it was fun.
I was worried when I saw the picture in the newspaper about the setup, but it works out fine.
It does. It really does. It was a lot of fun.
All right. Down to three minutes to kill.
Informational.
On page 32 of our agenda, we have a notification that we have received a grant. And that is from Eddie Waskey of the Minnesota Department of Health notifying us that the source water protection implementation grant toward in Paintsville is closed, and that we are going to be getting a payment of $8,300 for activities related to the grant. If we want to apply for further grants, there's a website where we can do so.
We will be applying for the one next year as well.
It's for the.
Yeah.
Waters, day. Yeah, Water Festival.
Right. We also have a rate notification from CenterPoint on page thirty-seven. Interestingly enough, didn't actually make it into my agenda packet, so. CenterPoint's going to be jacking up rates, because that's what they love to do. It's too bad that we can't build out our city the way that we need to, though. Oh, whoops, am I being offended? In October, we have a number of meetings. Gene and Neil, you have a budget and finance meeting on October first.
Not me, I'm not on budget and finance.
I am.
Megan. Megan and Neil, you have a budget and finance meeting on Tuesday, October first.
I almost forgot that I was, so thank you.
Megan, you have a special library meeting at ten AM on Wednesday.
Might show up in my scrubs.
Megan, you have a special, or a park and tree board meeting on Thursday at noon.
Come on, okay.
We've got an airport zoning meeting on Tuesday, October eighth at five. Gene, you've got a liquor board meeting at five thirty.
Nope, that got moved.
Well, I guess.
Twenty-second.
Gene, you have a Policies and Procedures meeting at one thirty.
Nope, that got moved too.
To the thirtieth.
Well, we have a tentative environmental meeting scheduled for Thursday, October tenth. Neil, you're here.
And tenth is also wine club.
You found us while we're killing time, waiting for our six-thirty hearing to start.
Perfect.
We could've almost skipped, there's not much left.
Gene, we have an EDA meeting on the fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, that's still on.
It is still on. Tarek hasn't canceled that one on us yet.
Nope.
Um, oh, I did receive word that the township is taking up the MPCA resolution that we sent over to them tomorrow night, so we should be getting something signed from them.
Good.
City Hall is going to be closed tomorrow afternoon for our employee appreciation picnic. From two to four thirty, I hope you are all there. We have a hard-working staff who deserve the little bit of thanks, we give them every one so.
I told Melinda that I wouldn't be there till three.
You know, Gene.
I have book club at my house.
Just kick 'em out.
Kick 'em out.
Same place last year.
I forgot my favorite, too. I don't have anything tonight.
All right, it is now six thirty, so we can start our public hearing when we get up to that page. Recently, we talked about it one of our last meetings, we've received a variance application from NS Retail Holdings, better known as Tractor Supply Company, asking if they could put a sign up on the back of their building. Um, in full disclosure, I think the manager at Tractor Supply chatted with me a little bit about this, and I told him that if we don't approve it, he should just paint the back of the building to match the sign, but anyway, uh, we'll open the public hearing. I don't know, Tarek, if you wanna start us off, or if you wanna talk to us about the sign a little bit more, it's pretty straightforward. Planning procedures took, or, not planning procedures, the planning committee took this up and recommends that we approve the sign, and we're gonna look at, uh, trying to avoid the need for these variances in the future.
Yep, uh, we, yeah, planning took it up, and they, they will be coming back at the next meeting with rec, specific recommendations for sign ordinance changes, as well as changes to the parking ordinance, which some ideas were already, you know, discussed, and hopefully they come back with them.
Okay.
Paul, anything else you wanna tell us about planning?
Went through pretty smooth.
Okay.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
We have to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, let's close the hearing.
I'll, I'll let. We'll get there. All right.
Can't make a motion in the hearing.
Anything else you wanna tell us about your sign request?
It's just a sign.
I think it's been pretty well covered, pretty straightforward.
But it's government, it's not covered until you tell us fifty times. We're only at forty-nine so far. All right, um, no, I think we're good, so with nobody else to speak, uh, Wes Cody, did you wanna talk about the sign?
He's killing time.
I thought you had strongly held feelings.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, he feels really strongly.
He doesn't have anything else to.
Crowd here.
All right, so then we'll close our public hearing, we'll go back to our business meeting, and at this point, I'd entertain a motion from Councilmember Thielen.
Can I make the motion to approve of variance determination for NS Holdings LLC?
I have a motion by Thielen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. I announced it, Gene.
I know.
But at least he got to say something.
He tuned you out, I know, I was gonna be like, let me do it.
Any other discussion? Bill, we're good without needing to make our own findings, since we're just approving everything, right? Or do we have to indicate that we're adopting the findings of the planning board?
I think you should adopt their findings, yeah, I mean, they're.
No.
Okay.
Paul, does your motion include adopting the findings?
Yes.
All right. All right, so motion to approve the variance determination and adopt the findings of the planning board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Great, we've gone through our informational, a little bit ad nauseam, so that concludes all of our regularly scheduled business. We do have a proposed offer on closed property. Anyone wanna make a motion to go into closed session to discuss that?
I'll make that motion.
So motion by Brick to go into closed session pursuant to section thirteen D O three and thirteen D O five of the open meeting law to discuss an offer for real property located at six eighty-three Airport View Court, seven oh point three eight six four eight point zero zero five four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Soini. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thanks.